The time is seven thirty-five. We don't stand for the education.
Father God, we just ask you to lead us this, at this meeting today. These people come together to do your will for this community. We ask that you, you to lead us into doing the best for all concerned. We praise you and we appreciate you, Jesus' name, amen.
Praise allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, united by individuals with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here tonight. We've got a lot to discuss, but I think we'll get through it really quick. Okay, so the, uh, some announcements.
Roach Hall.
Oh, Roach Hall, sorry, thank you. Roach Hall.
Allison Zerwick.
James Chen.
Eric Torey.
Pam Reed.
Elizabeth Alphorn.
Kathy O'Neil.
Mary said we'd be here in ten minutes. Okay, announcements. Uh, they're having a workshop here at City Hall on June twenty-seventh at six-thirty to discuss having a parks board to do events. Quinlan has fireworks show on June thirtieth. And then we have the Travers Jam Fest in our park on July the first from five PM to ten PM. And the EDC is sponsoring movies in the park July the fifteenth at eight-thirty. Any other announcements?
Um, Quinlan has their little prayer going on at that church on two seventy-six.
Oh, yes. So there's a Quinlan there at that.
It's called a protest hall?
Yeah.
It's just like the little ones with the.
The carnival. The carnival.
Yes, that.
I can support that church there on Highway two seventy-six. Any other announcements? Any citizens input related to our agenda? Then we're gonna go ahead and go to our consent agenda, for approval of minutes, approval. We don't have the bills paid, except that you can see them on the bank account statement, uh, financial report, profit, loss, and the bank statement. Do you need correction?
On the old business of the minutes. She has it for the westwakeneeetc.org. We're actually gonna have it as the westwakeneeetc.com and then redirect for the dot org.
Okay. EDC.com, redirection. EDC.org. Anything else? Getting so familiar with our profit and loss statement that I've been dreaming about it. It's not gonna go to bed. While I've been doing the budget.
What are these deposits, demand, deficit, or five, twelve? Who's that from?
The, the city made the first deposit for what they owe us on Rabbit Code, the loan that they check out to do Rabbit Code line. And that was our first deposit, one thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-two cents. They pay us every couple of months and catch up. And then, the other one is our sales tax for May. We give sales tax once a quarter and that's how much sales tax we're gonna do in that quarter.
For that quarter?
For the whole quarter.
That's two percent, right?
It's a little less than that. That's about what we're.
Four percent. Four percent.
That's not exactly what it says.
I like you seeing the movie.
Is that the downstream service that we use? Or we, that we were supposed to use sanitation solutions?
We, we put for the lowest price. And it was like one-third of what sanitation solutions charges.
Yeah.
But then we found out, and we stopped the service as soon as we found out that the city, since we had to, we have to have sanitation solutions.
I didn't, I didn't know that they could do that.
Apparently they can, okay.
What's that, Mel's Texas floor? David Mel's Texas?
Uh, that was working on bathrooms.
Yeah.
The bathrooms. That was the bathrooms that we had to repair.
That's great.
So.
Oh.
Hello, Mary.
They were twice for the portals.
Sorry.
That's okay, we're glad you're here.
And here, we're just going over the profit and loss right at the moment. We survived your here.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I just was over here, I was at the chamber meeting. Then I was over at that church, over there at the meeting, over there. Then I thought I had the other meeting back at the, uh, the housing project. So I took off my headset and I'm almost, almost, uh, out there to Rockwall, towards Rockwall, and I saw her fall. So I had to swing around.
You are a one busy man, one busy man.
I was going crazy.
I have one more question. On the check sequence, why are we missing the two nine seconds?
I think it's a break in between.
Okay.
Yeah.
If they wrote out one, it was not right.
Yeah.
And in that, when that page.
Yes.
Take a motion for the first one, approve of the minutes.
Second?
And then I'll make a motion for the approval of minutes from June three. With the change, you mentioned the change, right?
Yes.
With the change that Addison mentioned.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Is that negative behind maybe?
What?
Okay, then, it's percentage. It's percentage, not.
Yeah. It's percentage.
I don't know why they do that.
We're going into detail here on the starting of that shit. So, hey, so listen, before this TV sees that sanitation. Stuff in that building.
On the profit and loss, where it says net income? Is that saying that's what we receive? The eighty-three, or is that just?
Just one second, let me get in front of it so I can see where line you're looking at.
The very last.
The ordinary, the net income, negative. Which, which line are you looking at?
At the very last on the second page. Where it says net income.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, next to.
That is showing, um, over budget, which will be organized very shortly. We're that much over what we initially budgeted, but it is also not counting what we did on carryover for last year. I'll explain it more when I get into the budget. It's not making sense to me. I know. The way they do these profit and loss statements are not the easiest to, uh, understand. I would, if I had my way, I'd switch to a different type, which was much easier to understand for everybody, including our citizens. But I don't have a say in it. So, we're gonna continue doing these, which are not the easiest to.
Um, the new finance.
Well, no, it's the same as they've been doing here for, for years and years and years and years. And we don't want to change.
Right.
The people in the office.
They knew that you were the one that's doing it, right?
Oh, we are, are our go-to person for the EDC.
Can we, can we have that person that wants to come to?
I will ask, let's see. I will ask. Just to make sure.
Imagine if we do have questions, we have the paperwork in front of us and I need the people.
Right.
Out there.
Exactly, and I wanna be more, um, transparent with it. What I consider transparent, everybody has a different idea of what that means, but for what I consider, I would like it.
Clear on that, so everybody will.
I mean, if at any point in time I can get to understand what they're putting here, then I can dumb down on the website for, for lack of a better word.
But this, the numbers don't, they're difficult to understand. So, it's, this one's standing. Okay, so, do we have any motions on, on this so that we can move on to our, our business part?
Well, I'm gonna motion that we approve the, um, the minutes from June the fifth and approve the bills paid and those to be paid, and the financial report, profit and loss statement, and the bank statement.
Okay, so we've already approved. We've already approved. Sorry, sorry. We've already approved the minutes, so.
Okay. We're, we're down to approve the bills paid, those to be paid, financial report, profit and loss, and the bank statement.
Yes, ma'am.
Check in the motion.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
That's it.
Yeah. Okay, so that's, that's the budget, a whole different thing. Okay, so, um, let's go on to our old business really quick. Movies in the park, be on July the fifteenth. I took the time, eight-thirty, to use because I looked at the sunrise, sunset thing and that should give us about right time to start the movies for that particular time of year. So I, I thought maybe just say eight-thirty on that, right? Okay, um, and have y'all been able to test the equipment yet?
I brought. I knew you would.
I brought the box and everything. Right now I have a huge mess inside the building, so. You're gonna take it and probably take it to the firehouse or something like that?
Okay.
Or take it out home, whatever.
I have it right here.
Okay. Okay, so maybe we'll try it after the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I.
Not inside, yeah.
Exactly.
Well, we would need to do it kind of outside anyways, to see, yeah.
Okay, so that's where we're at in that. We've got a movie to show and the name of the movie is, remember? The Impossible. The Impossible.
And I'm working on using that QR code to get it downloaded onto. Um, I have a USB that I don't use anyways, since that's what we're monitoring to do movies, so.
Excellent, excellent, so.
Are we planning to test that today with that? Because folding that in.
Well, um.
It's a huge.
We don't necessarily have to get the screen out, but if you know about the, you know the size of it, right? So we can just put it up against, like, the outside of the building over here on the side.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, and just. So, the fire department is going to sell snacks for us. Excellent, so that's taken care of. Good.
I will bring y'all the popcorn issue.
Awesome, awesome. So we should have popcorn and drinks and snacks.
Oh, boy.
Looking forward to it. I'll probably get my grandkids to come do it with me. Okay, so that sounds great, all right. Anything else we need to discuss about that?
Just that we would like to make sure, what age limit did we wanna say could be of age to watch?
After talking to police chief, I think what we really need to do is, we need to say seventeen and older. You know, you cannot be there unless you're seventeen and older, unless you have an adult with you.
Right, yes. But it's hard for the babysitters, they have to be the seventeen-year-olds.
Seventeen-year-olds, okay. So, that's kind of where we're at on that. Then. So.
I need Alison to make a.
I'm working on that. I should have it done by the end of the week, that way we can get it out there.
Okay, sounds great. All right, um, so, is there anything else we need to discuss about that? We will have a police presence, but I don't know exactly how long it, time it will be, but they will stop by and check on this and if we have any problems, we have them on speed dial. Okay, um, so if there's not anything else on that, we're gonna move on to the color for the building. He gave us some swatches.
The inside or outside?
This is the outside of the building. And he suggested the darker the color, the more it would turn, would hide flaws. And so I think we decided on a gray color, so if y'all will look at those swatches real quick and see if there's something that y'all like in that color range.
Don't forget the roof is already red.
Yes, the roof is red, so it would be a gray building with white trim and a red roof.
Beautiful.
There's one right across the street that's a light gray with a red roof.
Yeah.
And white trim and a red door, that's really pretty. But we would like ours a little bit darker than, than that one, so that, um, you know, we don't wanna be twinsies, but we wanna be nice.
It's gonna be just one color?
One color, all the way around.
There they are.
Well, there's all different shades of gray. There's blue gray, green gray, there's red gray, there's purple gray.
Yeah, there's.
If we're gonna get it dark, and it's got a red roof.
Just that maybe a bluish kind of gray might look pretty with it.
Or they have the, the, like, their dark.
The stronger the gray, the faster it's gonna fade.
Well, this is true too.
But if you put the, the khaki gray, the tan in there, then it wouldn't, it's bad, right?
The stronger the gray, the faster it's gonna fade.
Okay, so that's something to consider.
Well, if you want a blue bright, there's your blue brights here.
Yeah, so, she'll be first, if they're on that side.
Yeah.
Hey Pam, I would love to go over this.
Okay.
The, the salmon? With the red one. They'd fan like that.
The gray at the bottom.
That's too dark.
And then something like, uh, shoot high thing.
Softly dark, softly dark.
Softly dark?
Almost black.
Oh, yeah?
That's what I see from here. Okay, you can see it from across. Well, sure, but you're close. But you're close to it. If you're gonna see it from across the street.
Oh, oh.
You know, it's almost black.
I wanna go with the brownish.
That's got more purple.
But you can get the gray with that reddish background.
I just wanna.
You like that one?
So let me show them what they want.
That's true.
I will guess, I will get something.
Okay, so we have one side and the other is the next one down, yeah.
Okay, so, they're liking this one here. So let me pass that over to y'all.
Why you got that good there? That's got red too.
This one, right?
Which one, the, the dark darker or the?
That one right there with your finger on.
Special gray? I like those colors too. Like that one too?
Yeah. It's a parting of the.
Let me see that red, put it next to that, roof red, whatever it is, which one is that?
We decided those two reds over there are the color of the roof. It's got that kind of background to it. One of these ones too.
They're going more brown.
Because it won't fade out as quickly either.
Take a look at, this is the estimated two tones of red that we have right now. Take a look at that. Either of these two. The Patrison Cafe.
I think the darker one, you like the lighter?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking something that can stand out.
The actual doors.
Tan or brown, we have a round town.
We can go darker on the trims, like colors or, or the doors or whatever it is.
The, the charcoal?
Yeah, something like this. Yeah, I would, I don't know, that's my suggestion.
I think that would not be a bad color, it's not bland brown, it's, it's more of a.
The, the two last reds are the estimated colors of the existing roof.
Right.
He's saying that the reds on the roof are kind of that color and he's thinking those colors.
Because here's what I'm thinking too. In the case, we got something later going on with that roof and then insurance can change it for us. We can change to a, uh, what is it? We can change it to a copper finishing color.
Right.
And we already have the walls. We should say more, more.
Your finger on it.
What about that one? Because then it's got more of the gray, but then it has that red background still.
You're saying.
Put it next to the red.
See, I don't want the whole building to kind of look red. That's one thing though, that I don't want to see happen.
Right.
That looks purple next to the red, really purple next to the red.
The only way you're gonna drown that red out is with.
Yeah, I think probably those coffee colors will blend with bronzey colored doors and trims and stuff like that, I need a whole pop to build it up.
Show one with gray.
The other gray.
The gray.
The gray.
I like the reason it's brown now.
It's brown now and.
And it's yucky brown, you know, it's faded out.
I like gray, I want my husband.
Is it brown or light? What color is it right now?
I think it's brown.
Brown, alright.
See, that's not really bad next to the red.
No, it's not, because it still has that hint behind it.
And that would drown out a little bit of the red, because if you get too much red on anything. She's my friend, it gets really hard.
You know, we gotta remember something, it'll be mad, you know?
Yeah, we don't care if she looks mad.
Take that right. The colors, it's also.
She's the meaner.
So if we were gonna sign it with her signature, it'd be green.
We don't want.
Green and black, the EDC colors.
We don't want that building to look like a Y M C A or something like that, so.
Tail on her face.
I know you want it. I know you want the solid color.
We can go Miami style, which is really by green colors and blue colors.
I think that's kind of the way.
We can go Miami style.
Listen, if I had, if I had a building that was my own, it would be turquoise, so. With palm trees, with palm trees.
All right, so let's vote on it. So, how many people for the brownage and how many people for the grayage? So we already have one gray, which one is?
The special gray.
The falcon gray?
Special.
Special?
It's this one, this is the one.
Third one, third one.
Falcon.
Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry. That's not the same one.
That's the one that they're signing.
Yeah, we're not here.
That's what you have.
Didn't they?
Yeah, but this is the one that they decided on.
Okay.
Isn't that the one that you all decided on?
The other one looked purple.
Yeah, okay.
They decided on that one.
Okay.
So the gray or the brown?
Uh, the gray or the, what was it? The, the Audison Cafe?
Potting?
Asian, Asian.
Asian, yeah.
Okay. So, the chain, the, the chair would like to take a vote on this. How many would like to see the gray on there?
I would like to see a brown.
Okay, how many would like to see the brown on there?
We have to, we have to imagine that this is.
It's a big gentleman.
Because it's very long.
That's, that's the thing, that's what we need to envision, that it's not just small. It's a big wall and it's a span of a building. We also gotta think that by the time, by the time we put a sign on that wall, the background has to be.
Neutral enough, yeah.
Neutral enough, because if not, then the sign is gonna hit, hidden by the background color. So there's a lot of stuff to think about it when we're picking a big color.
So, I had four votes for the gray, so.
I'm not having it.
So, I think we're gonna go with the gray.
What about the classic French gray? Because it's in that tongue with all the other colors. It's close too, but just a little tiny bit.
Yeah, I, I like the gray, however, to me, if we can go a little bit more.
Now, remember though, when you put a dark color on, it's always gonna be a little bit lighter when it gets on our building.
That has been a tree in the morning.
But it's gonna fade quicker. And the roof is the way to fade.
Run it down.
So. If you guys wanna go gray, I will go with the.
I, I agree with that, the other one, because it's not.
If you guys wanna go with gray line, I will go with, it's just gonna be too dark. And by the time we put a.
So, they wanna know if maybe y'all would go with this color gray instead?
Yeah, yeah, that's great. A little light.
You could use the other gray as the trim color.
No, we wanna use white.
Oh, you can use.
And the reason, there is a reason for that, because of that metal that has to be painted. He said, uh, because of the stuff that's on it, he has to put a special kind of paint on there and it's not in colors, so we gotta do white.
See how the white looks next to the darker?
Yeah. The color's a sign. We don't have a sign yet.
Hey, you can do the sign outlined in white.
What color is it now?
We don't have one.
We don't have a sign.
We're gonna make one.
The, the, the building itself is, it was a stucco block of cream colored something. And then the bricks were a reddish brown brick.
Paint over it?
Yeah, we're gonna paint over the bricks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just starting to.
I, I think what we're gonna do is, we've already had a vote. We got four of them that wanted that particular gray and I think so we'll vote with that because that's. Four of them. And that is.
The darker one.
Okay, so. This gray is. This gray is called marquee paint in Falcon Gray.
Well, are they, they're gonna put like kilts down first, right?
Yes, yes.
So they gotta lighten it anyway.
Yeah, it probably will.
They use a white.
It probably will.
No, if you, if you pick a color, they need to match that color. If you pick a color.
And kilts, you can get it, any color kilts in there.
Oh, see, I'm not used to that.
She's right, kilts.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's that.
Fail the name of the color.
Yes, let's say Falcon Gray, F A L C E L N Gray. And that is in a Behr color scheme.
Behr?
B E H R.
And hopefully they don't compute the building with a mechanical.
When Robert moves back to him, okay.
You wanna change here?
Maybe.
All right, so, uh. So the chair will entertain a motion. Let's do this the right way.
I'll make a motion that we use the Behr marquee Falcon Gray for them building color. The main color. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
You can say hey.
You're gonna like it.
Okay, um, so, so just all business, just to discuss repairs that have been made to, to the building. We have it cleaned out. We have electricity supposedly coming to the building whenever they get around to finally doing it at EDC. But we have paid for it to be turned on. We have the new roof on there and we did get a building permit for the roof to have it done. Uh, we have discussed any other repairs that have to be made and what we will need brick building permits on. Uh, and, uh, we're in the process of starting to get painted. So that's where we're at on that.
We haven't done any roof insulation spray foam, nothing like that yet.
Nothing like that yet. They did, uh. Power spray washed the building.
Oh.
Power works to it.
You know.
Okay, so anything else that we need to discuss with that building before we move on?
Can we fly for the P K grant?
For the P K grant?
The P K grant.
Oh, the facade grant.
Facade grant, yeah.
We don't need to apply. We're, we're already going ahead. Okay.
Just thinking ahead.
Just thinking ahead, yeah. Uh, someone's going to new business. Um, been talking with, uh, city hall here. One of the things that they've been doing in the past is when we needed something, they had to go on a credit card for EDC. They put it on the, um, credit card for the city. And then we had to reimburse them and they weren't always doing that reimbursement in a timely manner and it was. I'm one of those people that if I'm gonna buy something, I wanna pay for. And I wanna see the transaction right away. I don't wanna see it six months later when I've forgotten about it. So I was talking to them about trying to get things done more in a timely manner, you know, that, that. If we do something with the credit card, then we get it paid, you know, out of our funds so that it shows on our profit and loss that very next month. They suggested that we go down to the bank and apply for a, uh, debit card from our own account.
Mine's a great idea.
So what I would like is, uh, Kathy and I could be the signers on the debit card like we are on the checking account. And go ahead and get that done if, if that's possible.
Well, that makes more sense anyways because when you have to do the taxes at the end of the year, you're not gonna want it to happen in city. You want it to happen your own, so.
So.
I'll make a motion for that. For you and Kathy to be signers on a debit card from the bank.
Okay, good. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um. And check signers for EDC currently, it's Nate and Kathy on there. I would also like to put Harry on there as the vice president. So I would like to, um, get a motion for that.
And make a motion, we put Terry on to sign the check.
My second thought.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Harry, I'm gonna get a signer card for you and get whatever we need from the bank to get you on there.
Uh, and then you also, you need to check between the connection of I M A and B.
Right.
Because I do believe, uh, whoever is on B.
Would be on A, yeah. And if, if, if that's a group, well, the way they told me was that they would run our credit. Kathy and I to do the debit card.
What?
And so.
A credit card, but the debit.
Is it debit card or a credit card?
Debit card. I just want a debit card.
A debit is just taking the money that you have in there.
Then you're.
There should be no, it's on the organization.
That's what I thought to you, but they tell me that they would run our credit.
There's no, there's no problem.
I would second that.
But there's no problem, you know, as far as our credit.
But it shouldn't still, I would, I would second. Get a second.
Yeah, well, whatever we actually do.
Get a second, yeah.
We actually. So anyway, um, all in favor that we. Did I already do that, all in favor of?
Yes.
Okay, then we're, then we're done with that. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to the budget workshop.
I'm gonna amend A, just in case.
Uh, yes, let's go ahead and amend A, just in case that, that Harry could be a signer on the debit card. Uh, if they, they include all people on the debit card that are signers on the check.
Can I make a motion for, um, A and B under new business of Harry being added to sign?
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Budget workshop, okay. It's all these beautiful papers right here that I have spent weeks working on.
I don't know what to do.
Sorry, we gotta do it, we gotta do it. So I tried to explain this a little bit as we're going along, so it'll kind of help everybody. Uh, and make it a little bit easier for us to go through it. Okay, currently, the EDC owns a certificate of deposit. It is fifty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty cents. Certificate of deposit. We have a cash in the bank, sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars as of last week.
How old is that certificate of deposit?
It's many, many years old.
It's interest bearing.
And it is interest bearing. It is interest bearing. We get a little bit from it every time.
So.
So we got about two hundred dollars last year from interest on.
That's it? Yeah, that's. EDC, you need to, you gotta, um, check to the bank because right now, we can get a certificate of deposit at four point fifty-one percent.
Okay, so we need to.
You should get twenty-eight hundred bucks.
Exactly.
So what, what we need to is check on rates and see if we can modify that, okay?
Yes.
Cancel it.
Yep, cancel it and move it to A high.
Okay.
We need to leave it there for nine months and then either remove, renew every month.
So I will. I will check on that for sure.
You got an idea, man?
So, um. The sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars we currently have in bank. Hopefully, will be, uh, added to as soon as we close on that other property. And I'm putting that column kind of what we're expecting. We also have some bills that are outstanding that have not come in yet. That are on, listed on there also under actuals. So you can kind of get an idea of what's going on there.
So the previous budget was for sixteen-three forty-eight, or that's what it actually turned out to be?
Uh, that was what our previous budget actually was. And what is under actuals is, um, what we have. Actually spent. Not including the carryover. Okay.
So that one twenty-five, how do you get that number?
Okay, that's what we're proposing for the budget for this next year. And that was me adding all the other things that we say we're going to spend on from like the rest of the pages. That would be how much we would.
There, there's something here. So total assets, when we add the certificate of deposit, the cash in the bank and the prior year carryover. It's way over than one seventy-three.
Okay. It, it doesn't quite go like that. It's your certificate of deposit plus your cash in the bank is what that line is. Your certificate of deposit and your cash in the bank is what this line is here, your total assets. So this and this equals the one twenty-five seven oh seven.
So the forty-two thousand.
Just ignore it for right now. That's how much that we carry over from our bank account into our budget next year.
So the, the forty-two thousand are inside here some, somehow?
It's still in our bank account, essentially.
So that should be included in the assets.
Right, okay, so. But it's not.
Here's how, and I'm trying to thought, you have your prior year, you start with your prior year. And then you have your this year, right?
What we've spent is actuals. And then proposed budget is what we're.
What we thought it would be, but it's not.
Proposed budget is what we're, we're going to try to.
That's projected.
Right. Projected on. This page is more or less an information sheet, okay? What I'm telling you in this is that we have a certain amount in, in our certificate of deposit. We have a certain amount in our cash in the bank.
And that's the center, right?
And.
The actuals, right?
And that gives what we actually have in the way of hands on and put our hands on. It does not project anything for what we're going to do this next year.
So just the sixty-eight and the fifty-six, right?
So what's that forty-two thousand, is that money?
Okay, that forty-two thousand is how much out of our bank account last year we said we were going to draw in addition to the money that we came. In as in, uh, as income last year. That's what we said we would draw last year. Now. What we've ended up doing is we, we drew that money when we bought that property, essentially. And we drew some from all our other line items when we brought that property.
So they don't have that anymore?
So we don't have it anymore.
Okay, so it, it certainly wouldn't be there, you know?
Well, it just, it, it, we have to, I have to tell you what it was.
Right.
Whether it's there or not, but it's not added into any of these. Yeah, it's just an information sheet.
It should be, it should be on a line after total assets.
Yeah, this is, this is not like a profit loss sheet that everything adds up. This is just an information sheet.
It's just going in the mix of what that information's got.
Yeah, on this one.
And on the total assets.
Total assets are only what you have in the bank and what you have your.
You see, which is the one twenty-five.
But not including the profit.
Not including the property, yeah.
These are cash.
These are cash assets.
Okay.
Cash assets.
Because the total assets will include the profit.
And then what I have down on the carryover line, I show what we carried over from our bank account into our budget last year. And I show you what I expect we will have to carry over into our budget this year to make all the ends meet. So, carryover.
What do you mean by that? Because to me, carryover is what was left.
No, the, the, what she means carryover, it's technically money that was projected to be used that was not used.
Right, so it's left.
That is, pretty much is not a carryover, it's just.
So here, imagine, okay, so what we, what we.
It's a carry forward.
Yes, imagine you have a certain amount in the bank and you say, okay. I'm gonna have to spend this and this and this and this and this for this year to make the ends meet. And it shows up to be less than your income that you're going, that you're going to make.
Yes.
So your carryover is what you expect that you're gonna have to take out of your savings to make up the difference in the budget.
Do you have one twenty-five, is it?
We have one twenty-five seven oh seven and we expect that we're going to have to have twenty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixteen cents of that to, to have enough in our budget, which will leave us with assets of one oh three, three eleven, sixty-five at the end of the year.
Okay, so where is that money coming from, that twenty-two thousand?
Out of the bank account.
That's why I'm, I'm, I'm lost.
I think, I think in my opinion, in my opinion, I think we are going to get a better sense and idea whenever we get to get the lady.
Yeah.
Been here because we have one way of doing things in our financials and this is a separate schedule, you see what I'm saying? So I think we need.
Yeah, when we do, when we get to the other page, just when we get to the other page, we will make more sense, okay? Okay.
Thank you.
So, this one is just. To tell you what, I'm expecting that if we keep everything on the budget the way that it is currently listed for this year, that we will have to take out savings for it.
Second, so you have open anything?
This is carryover amount.
Okay.
Okay, so let's go to income. This will be easier to understand. Okay. We expect that from our sales and use tax this year, the EDC will make sixty thousand dollars will come. We've so far collected fifty-three thousand eighty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents, okay?
Okay, that's projected.
And, and we've already collected the actuals of what we've already collected, okay? And we know that we have another quarter coming and that with the other quarter, we were expected that we will make.
Yeah, the sixty.
Make the sixty that we put on our budget last year. So therefore, I am also including for our budget this year that I think we will get sixty thousand again this year. Now, if sales tax goes up here or something else, we will actually make more than that sixty thousand. But we're gonna keep the margin what it was because that was a pretty good estimate and pretty well is right on target. Okay? So we go to the next one, which is interest income. Now, last year, we projected that we would get twenty dollars in this interest income.
What is the interest income?
It's.
Just what the bank is giving.
Just whatever, you know, they, they get from other countries. And what we actually got was nine dollars and thirty-six cents. So, yeah, yeah. So I projected that we'll make about ten dollars next year on that line, okay?
I will, I will put on the projected one, twenty-six hundred dollars.
If we do that.
We can, do that.
If we do that change.
Yeah, if we do that change, we have done that change and we have to go from what we have.
So then we didn't do it.
Right, so other revenues. Currently, we have not been taking in other revenues that are not gonna be listed on here, so I have left that zero all the way across. Okay? Now, repayment of the loan from the, the city of West Rockany for that rabbit code. There, they give us nineteen thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-four cents a year for that. And currently, they paid us fourteen thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-eight cents of it. But by the end of the year, they will have paid that. But by the end of the year, they will have paid that total amount in nineteen thousand three hundred and fifty. And they have the four-year next year that they are expected to pay that. The following year will be, and will finish paying November twenty-fourth. So, we will not be getting that money after that day.
Are we making any interest rates on that or?
Yes, we, it's included in the payment.
Why are they not paying it monthly?
Because they're the city and they can get by with it.
Because they were our.
Tell that to the bank.
They were our banking people.
They're our banking people. And, and literally, I go in and remind them.
What, what was the total amount for the loan?
Oh, the total amount for the loan, I don't have the papers in front of me, but it was a huge amount, plus two-hundred thousand dollars.
How long ago?
Several years ago.
And, uh, it is main payment to what, ten-year note, twenty-year?
It's paid off next year. Yeah, I think it was a ten-year note.
Ten years.
So anyway, but it, it's set in stone what it is and there's no change.
The note is paid off next year because I've been busy with it. I've been here nine years on board, so, and we did it with my own board, so it's only been a few years.
Maybe five years then, five years then, okay. Anyway, it's set in stone, that's what we're gonna get.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm adding a new line so that we can keep track of the fish and nutrition button that we have. And this is what we will be getting back on par this next year is one thousand four hundred and sixty dollars.
So she's being a hundred and twenty-one.
Hundred and twenty-one.
Twenty-four. Is twenty-three, twenty-four, what month does it start?
It, it starts October of twenty-three and runs through September of twenty-four.
That's the fiscal year.
Okay, so I don't want to focus.
Okay. So if we add all those together, we get eighty thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-four cents.
Eighty thousand, sixteen, seventy-nine, eighty.
Eighty, eight, twenty-three, eighty-four.
Plus.
Plus, and what I'm saying is that if we do the budget the rest of the way, like I've got it here, we will need twenty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixteen cents in carryover to give us a budget of one-oh-three, two-twenty. Our budget last year was one-twenty-one, seven-twenty-five, eighty-four. And that included carryover that we, we did last year.
So, so we get, we get eighty thousand eight hundred and twenty-three in the next fiscal year?
Correct.
Now, where do we get that twenty-two thousand from?
We will be short the twenty-five thousand.
That's what it means, right?
Yes, if everything goes like it's budgeted. If everything goes like it's budgeted, but see, here's the history.
But if it's still in the account from the previous year, then we wouldn't actually be short the twenty-two thousand, right? But just in the budget, right? Just in what you're saying.
We have to make the budget balance.
Yes.
And if every, if we do everything that we've got on here as our proposed budget, then that's how much money it will take us to do everything.
So that money has to come from that, that, that money we have on, that sixty-eight thousand, to take it from there.
Correct.
Okay.
But please remember that when we finish the deal on the land that we're selling, we will have another hundred thousand in with that. So that will.
So that's supposed to be on the projected too, right?
Well, I, I can't put it on there until we actually finish the deal. But you can, you can put it in your head, it's there.
I got you.
You know?
But it's not supposed to be in the proposed budget?
Not unless, not unless the day that I turn this into the city, it's already taken care of, then I can put it in there.
But we're putting sixty thousand hoping that the businesses around will sell that much for us to collect sixty thousand.
I understand what you're saying, but it's, it's just one of those little.
We don't even have the property into our assets, so somehow the property has to be in here.
But not in the cash assets.
Not in the cash asset.
I know.
Don't, don't worry about it, don't go real deep into it because if we do this, by the time I turn this in, I will have it in the cash account and we'll change those numbers. But if it's not in the cash account, I can't change the numbers. I have to show exactly what I see from the bank.
While we're talking about.
So the actual property is not included in there?
It's not included because it's not a cash asset.
Okay, so this is strictly cashed.
This is strictly a cash asset.
Okay, so what happens to our other assets? Remember those reports I printed out from the state?
They go on.
Do you still know what those assets are? The equipment and the stuff like that?
Well, we're gonna have to figure that one out still. But, uh, the, uh.
Because it says we don't equipment.
Well, and this is the reason that I'm keeping such strict records.
Yeah.
Is because apparently, we're supposed to have some assets that we have no idea where they are.
Or what they are.
Or what they are. And so what we are working on is to have our records so.
Precise?
Precise that we will know exactly what our assets are at all times.
So we've got stuff we don't know nothing about.
It's always so.
It's been reported to the state.
It's been reported to the state, but we have no idea where it is or what it is, and so we have to find that out. That's, that's the next thing on my huge to-do list, B D C.
My, my assumption is that.
Those things straightened.
It only grows.
It only grows.
My assumption is that maybe it's equipment for Parks Department? Because I couldn't imagine we'd have heavy equipment that would go anywhere else.
I don't know, I don't know whether they misappropriated the funds to buy city equipment, I don't know. And that was way before we started here and because it's way before that, we have to track this down. It, it may be that these, this equipment is in the junkyard now.
Right.
Because it's been somebody years.
Could be those, those mother homes that were.
It could be at the park. It could have been the trailers that were at the park, I, I don't know.
Then we just have to go about getting.
Cleared, cleared off. And so, that's one of the things that we're gonna work on. And I'm so glad that I have Allison over here to help me here.
I don't know if I can use you more, maybe better.
Yeah, she, she actually does. Whenever I find out there's something, then I start digging, she digs and we run.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna work on that, okay? All right, so our income. That's our proposed budget for the next year is the one-oh-three, two-twenty. For. Okay, so now we're gonna be on to expenses, okay? So. Capital costs.
Yes.
And ladies and gentlemen, I want to close this by nine o'clock, which is about twenty minutes. So if we don't get through with this, we'll have to call another meeting, okay? All right. Uh, additions to fixed assets. This is where we need to put the cost to fix up thirteen hundred East Quinlan Parkway, the wiring to the building, the sewer and water to the building, all those other things. And so I have put an estimate there of spending approximately twenty thousand dollars to get this money taken care of.
Is that on top of what was already done?
That's part of what we brought in.
Which is the roof is not there yet on the actuals, right?
No, where the roof is done. And it's already paid for. It's already paid for.
Right, this is.
Just it doesn't show, it doesn't show here, they put it on a different line, I'll just say that. They did not put it on that great line when we were doing this, but that's okay. So. Okay. And anything else that we want to do with, with that doping, we'll have to go on that line from now on. Okay? So I'm saying twenty thousand dollars. Acquisition of fixed assets, that does show where we have bought that property and some of the, and we put some of the repairs, they put it on that line. And so that's the reason that it looks more than what we paid for the property is because they put it on that line. Okay? This next year, we cannot afford to buy any property until we get our property fixed that we're working on. So I put zero on the budget for that. Park road. We were the ones that initially put in the park road. And so I guess, initially, I guess we're still responsible for the park road. There are a couple of little areas on the park road that need some repair. And, uh, so I awarded five hundred dollars there too.
So the Parks Department doesn't cover?
I don't think so, it was supposed to come back and fix it.
He did fix some. He did fix some of it. And I'm, I'm talking, I'm gonna talk to him again about coming and fixing some other things. But there are some things there and we may, may have to do some more to the road if we do. I'm just trying to put some money in there so that we have money to do it.
So the park road is the road that's going all around the park?
All around the park.
Or does the entrance open?
All around the park. Apparently, the EDC is the one that put in that road.
Right.
Exactly, Jack, the park board prior to this, were they responsible for the park?
The park board was responsible for the park prior to this.
Okay.
But what happened was somehow or another, they talked the EDC into doing that road.
Park board. Okay.
That didn't really make an hour.
No, that's just, we finished a project and then it should be end of the project.
Yeah, it should be.
But if they do a park board like they're talking about, they can pay for their own.
If they're gonna have a.
We can't just have a, they can exist and on running a project.
Right.
They have to have an ending.
Our responsibility to budget for that.
So do you want to take that out of the budget? We can do that.
I mean, I, I was gonna say we should leave it just because.
Yeah, leave it for now.
The city, I understand, but we don't want to be stuck in our hard spot and not have it if it's something that we have to do, but we should not have to.
That is the thing, they are about to select a new board for that park and we don't even know what's gonna be their agenda.
Right, true.
So, um.
But if it's there and we don't have to use it.
I will let them to take the lead. And then if they come to us for any kind of assistance, we can meet and decide, that's it. But like Allison said, this is not a never-ending project for us, so it has to be enhanced.
I would say, I would say take the money out for this one, one reason, because somebody, let's say when they have a new board, they'll say, oh yeah, EDC is gonna do this.
Yes.
They're gonna fix the road, so they don't have to do anything.
We'll take responsibility.
So then it'll become a big project for us.
Okay, so we're gonna put zero on the budget then, okay? We have to take, take part of that five hundred out of our carryover.
And if we have to fund it as another new project, we can do that instead of having to budget anything there where they're like, they're just gonna be.
Same, same, same thing with the restrooms too. We already did our part and there is no reason for assigning another five hundred dollars for what we're fixing for it.
They have to, and they have to do something.
Yeah.
So we'll take that off also.
But that comes out of.
Total twenty thousand then.
So it comes out of that twenty-two thousand, so we're gonna come down. Okay, okay. So that will change our total on capital costs, it'll go down to twenty thousand. So that's that for each desk.
Are we not gonna do anything for the sign?
Uh, I did not put anything down there.
We can move that thousand to them.
So EDC has the like, what, hundred thousand something?
Yeah, I, I just think we can't afford one yet.
Can't afford it.
Not, not the right big one, yeah, okay, I understand what you're saying.
It's sort of cardboard, so.
No, but you know, like, um, and I know this is gonna be difficult to say like that, but the novelty store down there, they have that scrolling one on the front of their building, very cheap, easy.
I would love to have, but it's.
Yeah.
So if you would like to use that thousand dollars to.
That would be well more than.
Into the, into a park sign?
I agree.
I think that, that five hundred we saved.
Because that would even.
Okay, so.
Yeah, put that thousand dollars for a, uh, light bulb sign or whatever it is.
Okay, so that makes it twenty-one again.
Kathy, how much was the one foot of fire?
For the what?
We, that was done, right?
Yeah, that was the twenty-five hundred.
For that five hundred one?
Yeah. No, 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 the whole structure just assigned itself.
Oh, she's not, I've never made every year.
That was for.
That's why I should, that's not.
So it's just gone, we just didn't use it?
We didn't use it.
So it's still in the account, right?
It's still money in that account.
Okay.
Okay, so. Back to the next one. Okay. Direct business incentives. Now, this is where we actually help our businesses.
Yes.
This is where we give them grants to be able to do something with their business. This is also where we help them with the infrastructure for the business. It cannot be infrastructure for the city, it has to prove that we're doing something for a business per se. And also job training for a business. So that's what direct business incentives is. So, I would like to see us being able to give a thousand dollars a month to some business.
Right, and we already in the five-year plan said that we would help twelve a year, one, one each one of the years.
So that's the other part, you know?
Either we decide who to help.
Well, we're gonna have to work out something for an application for helping, and I'm gonna have to review that.
I'm working on it. And it'll be all on the website as well, they can just fill it out online, submit it, and then you can review.
Here's it. Also, uh, infrastructure development, another thousand dollars a month to try to help some of these businesses to.
What, what is it, what kind of infrastructure?
Infrastructure, that would be like if they want to work on a parking lot or they want to work on, um.
Their sewer.
Their sewer line, right, their actual business. Or they want to do.
Their sign?
Their sign.
Air conditioning.
Air conditioning, things like that.
Facility facilities.
Facilities, yeah.
Just twelve, thirty, twenty-seven thousand there.
Yeah. And job training, we set up something, I, I don't know what we're gonna do for job training, we haven't had anybody really.
But we can also get with the, the workforce on that and see what they have to offer.
They have a.
Out here.
Right.
But they can.
So I, I thought we could use a little bit of money. So I've got budgeted for total business incentives, twenty-seven thousand dollars.
That's just for the direct, right, just for.
Just direct.
Ones that are.
Direct business incentives on. Fixing it go to administration. Okay. Public relationships, this is for meet and greet, park, hosting a chamber luncheon every six months. These are all public relation kinds of things that we need to participate in our community so that we become something that they recognize here.
Could we bring quality of lives?
Yeah?
Because it's creating metta quality of life.
Metta quality, yeah. So, um, I budgeted a thousand four hundred dollars because that would give us about two hundred dollars for each one of the meet and greets to have three a year. And it would give us about four hundred dollars for the chamber lunches twice a year.
Do you think two hundred dollars is gonna be enough for our event that we create for our businesses?
Well, because we've been supplying the stuff, so we don't have that much more expense. Like the, the lunches, we're purchasing the stuff we're thinking.
Now, we can cater each one of our meet and greets instead of us doing it. And if we do that, we're gonna have to bump it up.
Right.
To about four hundred dollars for each meet and greet, because that's about what it costs to, to be able to do that. And it's empty on, if you want to do that, we'll do that.
I think if we're doing it for somebody else.
Right, I see where you're going.
Why won't you do it, why don't you do it for the businesses we're pushing?
Right.
So you wanna add that?
Cut the chamber lunch in by one.
Well, I think she's gone off the cost that was recent.
Yeah, the chamber lunch, yeah, and I figured two, two a year would be a good way to, to get us mentioned out there, but if you want only one a year, we can do one a year. Except to you guys, how you wanna do it?
Two a year, what do you think, you know, before two weeks before?
Right, right, right. I don't forget to show up, number one.
Yeah, I, I'd rather give it to the businesses, we're getting the income from the sales tax, our businesses, than, because yeah, we can do it to the chamber, but how many of our businesses will participate on that, if you understand?
I see what you're saying, but actually we do have quite a few of our businesses that are in the chamber.
Yes.
Quite a few, but there's a lot of small businesses that they are not.
We can move things out, right?
Yeah, we have an opportunity to speak at the chamber meeting too, we could promote our businesses, we could hear in that moment in time.
That's one reason I wanted to do two a year, because it was our opportunity to get up there and explain what our EDC is trying to do for our, our town.
Yeah, to spotlight.
The second we just at least put the, um, hour up to three hundred, and then probably just leave the four hundred on there just too.
Okay, we can do that.
Just for budgeting, just in case.
Okay, so if-
Three hundred or seventeen hundred.
Yeah. Okay, so you wanna add, do you wanna do it three hundred or four hundred?
I will go with three fifty.
Okay, okay, three fifty.
Times, times three.
Times three.
That's true.
Let that four, four hundred and fifty to the fourteen hundred.
So eighteen fifty.
Eighty fifty.
Right, I guess we might wanna get a little bit more fancier with ours, almost start.
So we're going at eighteen fifty.
I'll wear gray hair bows.
You wanna walk a little faster, right, you only have two more minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Shall we get some, um, we call the-
Name tag?
Name tags, yes. We can make us a name tag. We can wear them about town, and, you know, when we go to an event, we've got our name on it, so people can recognize us.
I'll make us one.
So obviously, we're not gonna get through with this tonight, but we're, we've got a good start here, okay? So internet host.
Three fifty.
Three fifty, that should be, that should be good, because it's, um, it's like two hundred and sixteen for the year, but then on top of that, we would be adding that redirect for the dot org, so that adds a little bit to it, so that should be fine.
That should be about right, okay? And the A and B charges, these are back charges, and I expect we'll probably have the same amount we had last year, so twenty dollars down there. Attorney fees.
We can't fix him. Now, we can't fix the attorney fee.
No, I still think we need to do, now, we're, we're getting by with less than the five thousand, um, but he is going up on his rates this next year.
I mean, we put him through a hell of a resumption.
Really bad.
He should, he should cut down, never mind go up.
So anyway, I think that's-
So he's going, is he increasing quality?
No.
Uh, well, he did give us-
He, I just, he got us registered.
He did do that.
He, he did start working on a, a, a lot for the property and some other things, so we, we have used him a lot this year. So, yeah, and he's, and he's been really good about what he is charged as he's not charged as well, it was probably worth giving, to tell you the truth, so I think we need to leave his alone. Okay. Okay, so let's get through at least administrative charges, okay? The annual audit, uh, that's how much they, they want from us every year for the audit. They have not taken that out yet, but it will be there before the year is over. Uh, training and travel, uh, I estimated on this what it would be to, um, to get some people going every year to some of these conferences from our thing, because that only helps us when we can go. So that's the reason I have about four thousand dollars down there for training and travel. Office supplies, uh, eight hundred is a good number for the amount of paper and stuff we use. Uh, mowing, sorry, mowing, yeah, mowing, uh, that's what I figure it's gonna cost us to properly keep that property mowed and looking nice. Uh, EDC membership, every year we have to pay membership, and I insisted that every one of us be a member of the EDC for the state. Because they give us good information, they have online things that you can do that don't cost you anything, and that's just part of being on board is to pay that membership. Chamber of Commerce dues a hundred and fifty, that's what they charge us every year. Sales tax workshop, every year we need to plan that probably four people are gonna have to go to the sales tax workshop, because they want you to renew it every two years. And so we're gonna have to rotate and get everybody trained and keep everybody trained that's on board. Because one of the things they're really pushing is that if you don't do the sales tax workshop every two years, you can't serve on a EDC board.
Plus they can find up to a thousand dollars.
Plus they can find.
Per minute.
Larry, you're scheduled for September.
What? You and you are scheduled for September, I know, and Allison, you're scheduled for September?
I thought so.
Okay, I'll double check my hand, have you?
Are you taking?
Not me, not yet, I can't do it that day.
Okay.
Maybe I'll be in the second group.
In the second group, okay. So we just need to work on it, Kathy and I are okay for another year.
So I need to do it.
You need to do it.
I need to try to do the September too, is that an end class?
That's, you go there, it's in Allen, I believe, or Richmond, I can't remember, but yeah, dollars and-
We can, we can file in my car. In my plane.
Yeah, that's fine, fine. Okay, grant writing, we didn't use any money for grant writing this year. I still would like to try to find somebody to help us find some grants.
I had the city secretary send me to the city of Quinlan views.
I was just ashamed.
And me and his phone number, and I've got it in my phone.
Is it Ray Van?
Yeah, I don't know.
Either that or we can also, um, hit up the Tara EDC guy, cause they, they got all their stuff together over there.
Yeah, they do.
And he's actually on the T EDC board now too, so.
Yeah, Ray Van, good information. I'm gonna talk to him too. So we'd like to be that miscellaneous, I, I'm one of these people that say, if you don't know what it is, why are you putting money into it? So I didn't put any in miscellaneous administrative things. City website is something new, they're going to start charging us a portion of their, their bill for their city website.
How much is their website?
Uh, well, since this is about a third of it, one thousand three hundred dollars, so their website must be
Eight.
Three thousand nine hundred dollars a year.
Well, I'm just gonna play, I don't know, that's what I'm giving y'all.
Yeah, I know. Okay, and since we are-
We're gonna play for it again and see.
Okay, so the other thing here I put down is utilities.
Why do we say the city?
Right, because-
We have-
Because we have a link into their page?
But it has to be there.
It has to have.
They have to have our information on there, but that doesn't mean they have to charge us to put it on there, that's a requirement by the state.
We are a nonprofit organization, why would they charge us?
Because they want to pay for their internet, they want to pay for their internet, and so they don't-
But we are paying internet here.
But that's not.
That's our, that's our.
That's our own, and we, and they have to post on the city one for our agendas, our minutes, our-
Tell us something, that, so go for the internet here, it's ninety-eight dollars a month, do math. That's nine hundred and eighty dollars for ten months.
But it's not for their, their, uh-
They have, um, or who did their?
They have that website, they have to use.
You see it up in there, when you go to the website.
Bureau of Affairs?
Um, it's the-
Bureau of Affairs.
Is that how it is?
Our company.
I can't remember, but yeah, they have a whole company thing doing it.
They have a company doing the website, anyway, but that's our part of it.
Okay, I think we should leave it in there just because, but we should discuss that later.
Yes.
Okay, utilities, aren't you can average for?
Just for the-
Then utilities, water and, uh, electric, and just put that in the budget.
On the property?
On the property, once we get an office and everything over there going. So, that puts us at twenty-two. But it actually will change with the public relations went up, so I will add that in, I've got to get the correct number there, yes, and correct that.
Alright, two more pages, let's go.
Okay. Okay, personnel, secretary wages, we're not gonna argue about that, we're gonna pay ourselves, we're being here. Okay, uh, marketing and promoting, um, I went from what we spent last year on the maps, I'd like to find something else similar to that, you do some of my work.
By the way, everybody that has had those so far has loved them.
Absolutely.
Yes.
I've had nothing but good things said about them.
Yeah.
And so I'm really pleased about our money that we spent on those maps. That went really well with liberty marketing, okay? Uh, yeah, I have an other area, in case we find something else we wanna put the marketing thing on. Uh, last year we spent five hundred dollars to ISD for the fishing tournament, I would like to see us spend a little bit more on that this year. Advertising.
When's that being promoted? Marketing?
Yeah.
Or is this for businesses?
Jamfests.
Okay, so, last year, the eleven, twelve, one oh three advertising, they put our Jamfest on that one. And I've got a special line for the Jamfest down there, so kind of ignore the actuals in there, and I proposed a budget of one thousand dollars on there. And that's for, uh, if we wanna put something in the paper, or if we want something else to go in there. Uh, we no longer have the Visit Lake Tewakini, so we can, the development between maintenance and the Visit Lake Tewakini was what we were paying.
That's my point, thirteen fifty to have the whole website thing for separate, and they wanna charge thirteen hundred?
Well, we're talking about that one. Okay, and, and I did want us to be able to say for the Jamfest next year, to say, to give them the same amount, so that's the reason I have the five thousand dollars here.
That doesn't mean we have to just-
It just means that, that we're set for.
Only get that one with we.
Yeah. Cause we don't see how this goes.
Alright, uh, other, uh, does our four A and four B projects, and that's if something comes up that we'd like to do. And I would love for us to look at the park this next year and maybe look at some park equipment and a cover for the park equipment we put out there. So I budgeted twenty thousand dollars for us to take a look at that, and I'm gonna get some bids on what it would take to-
Well, that'll also be dependent on the park board thing, right?
Well, we can do the playgrounds.
Right, but they can do playgrounds there, right.
But they don't have money to do the playground like we do. Well, that might be a good project for us.
Yeah, our kids deserve it.
Yeah.
Nobody wants that data, right?
Yeah, I just wanna have the budget there that we can-
Okay.
We got one more page?
One more page, we're almost there, almost there. Job training, uh, I put some money aside.
You're donating before three thousand dollars?
Job training, that's for individual businesses.
Right, that's like if they need their employees trained.
Who's this for?
The under job training, that's for, uh, like if we wanna do a job fair, or we wanna do, uh, workforce relations with bringing them out. Bringing them out, you can, thanks for that.
Pretty much like what we're doing with the shake hands thing.
That would make sense.
Does it make more sense when we went through it in line five?
That's thirty-two thousand actually, you should have shown that, you know.
Gone backwards.
Probably should have, but, yeah. So the chair will entertain a motion at this point.
No, we have to accept the budget first. I make a motion that we accept the proposed budget, buzzer, budget, as, with the changes, with the changes necessary.
I second.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and it's rise nine, so now the chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion, will you turn?
Second.
I third.
Aye, all in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Do you only have to one minute? They don't have to take a minute, and I can actually just do it in here, show the light, show it on that wall, be done. Well, because I just wanna segment you.
No, if you said it's okay, it's okay.
You got one minute. Otherwise, I'm gonna have to call you out in the middle of the week.
Next one will not be so long, I promise, I promise, this year will not be so long.
Excellent, excellent.
It was.